All right, so call the meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge.
Let's allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America. To their father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody to the work session, 10:30 AM, November 17. Ask Secretary of Treasury.
Yep. Scott Harwitz.
I'm here.
Chip Maron.
Here.
Here.
And Matt Parsons.
Here.
All here, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, let's get started on the agenda. I have 58 Shinnecock and I think one whiting, your folks' project is kind of right next to. You know the drill? Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning.
Here, last session, we needed to make a couple of tweaks, right? And we did that, correct?
Last session you asked for us to be added to the application, we did do that.
Okay, both of you, so, James, you have all that paperwork?
Yes, they added the floats as requested, however, one of them, one whiting, we need the stamp plans for. 58 Shinnecock, we have stamp plans, but we don't have stamp plans for one whiting.
Okay.
I do.
You have stamp plans?
I do, yeah.
Is that what you needed?
You didn't ask, you just asked for it to be added to the application.
Well, to finalize everything, we need stamp plans, so.
These aren't stamped.
Oh, I just picked them up. Okay, I'll have to bring them back to you. You have stamp plans of just the bulkhead, that was just the addition of the floating dock.
All right, but you've done everything.
58 Shinnecock.
All right.
I asked for one whiting.
One whiting, so, do you have stamp plans for your project?
Whatever I sent you and I have this that I gave her to drop off, I wasn't available to go down there.
They're just gonna need engineered stamp plans that has your application similar to what they have.
Right, that's.
The original ones with the bulkhead.
Were they stamped, the ones that you provided, the plans, they're not the stamped copy, you probably have to get, use the same engineer?
Yeah.
Right, so, you probably just have to go back to the engineer and get the plan, get the copy that has the stamp on it, is probably all you need to do.
Okay.
So, you're fine otherwise, you've done everything that you're supposed to do, but we're gonna need that copy of the stamp plans.
Of the actual, you're talking about the bulkhead?
Yes.
The bulkhead and your docks, you're applying for a floating dock as well?
Yeah.
I guess we have to.
Or you can just not have it.
They added it.
No, they added it, no, he just needs the stamp plans, you need to do exactly, they have, they have what they need, right?
Yeah, you need stamp plans for all the stuff that you have under the character.
That's not it, yeah, no, you just need to get the same, you need to do the same, you see that?
Yeah, I think I do have that.
So, you need to provide that.
This is just the.
Use the same engineer.
This is the floating dock.
Okay.
Right, use the same engineer?
Yes.
You need to get that form over to James, that's all you need to do.
We could probably pass it pending, pending stamp plans.
Yeah, I think you're both good, these are both fine, pending receipt of just the stamp plans. All right, it's the same engineer, he should be able to provide what you need.
Okay.
All right, you all good with that?
Yes, sir.
And you have James's email and all the contact information, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, just stop in by the office.
Just make sure.
Yeah.
Or just stop in at 240 West Montauk Highway in Anthony's.
So, we can email it to James?
You can.
Just have the engineer directly email the stamp plans and it'll be smooth.
Yeah, done everything that you needed to do, you cleaned up what you needed to clean up, it's just a matter of the. Yeah, you have that, that's all you need to do, all right? Pending that, it's all fine. Yours is fine, it's just the one, yeah, yours is fine, he just has to get the one, okay? So, it'll move to the next step of resolution, so you're all, you're all set.
So, we don't have to come back down here anymore?
Uh, no, not, you just have to go and provide what James needs, just a copy of the stamp plans, same as they have, that's all you need to do, you don't have to come down.
Once we receive the stamp plans, we'll do a final look at them and then basically say it's good to go, you know.
Okay. Future meeting.
Yeah, the future meeting.
Okay, if you have any questions, just reach out to the office.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, have a great.
Thank you.
Next one I have is 19 Old Point Road.
This is fine, we just need the plans to have the engineer's stamp.
Good morning. So, we have been working back and forth on this for several meetings.
Double check that you don't have it here, because you could see.
And I think that, there was just some question, because obviously the project's a great project, there was just a question of whether or not there was permit for the boardwalk, but they have.
The original boardwalk.
Which you were able to provide. So, I'll give you the floor.
Okay, so, the current plans, well, originally it was a five-foot wide bulk, uh, boardwalk going across, we reduced it to four, which is what was allowed in the original permit, so, as far as the bulkhead and the boardwalk are concerned, it's completely in kind, in place, what we are adding is six feet of stone gravel as a buffer.
Right, so, you are tweaking your elevation.
Yes.
You're tweaking your elevation, you're adding a buffer where there is no buffer, and you've provided the proof of the permit that was prior existing, so, I think at this point, they've done what we've asked them to do, in my opinion, you're putting buffer where there's no buffer, it's actually gonna be a better project than it's there right now, you're gonna be eliminating runoff into the bay. At this point, where we've been back and forth, they've done what we've asked them to do, so, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, is it possible to add some plants into that gravel? Or is that?
I'm gonna let the homeowners express their opinion on that.
Well, I did look at the Blue Book and gravel is a permitted use for it, and looking at some of the neighbors, there's a house that's two doors over that used the gravel, which gives the non-organic relief that you're looking for, also, in our project, it asks for a splash guard, which delineates the difference between the fertilized area and the stone area, so, it keeps it totally separate, it can't really encroach without you seeing it, it's not like over time it can continue on, and I actually have a picture of the neighbor's house that's now five years old, that still looks the same like that.
Right.
So, I would, I would go for this, and this actually was approved by DEC, where sometimes they say just non-vegetated, but they specifically authorized it to be compliant for the pea gravel.
Yeah, you know, our regulations, as far as I understand, you know, allows you to do that, I just encourage anyone who has these properties to, you know, look into it, it does, it does do a good job of anchoring that substrate, you know, one thing I worry about with that is the application of an herbicide, like, you know, if, to keep it that plant-free, I want to make sure that no one is actually applying an herbicide that close to the water.
Well, you're supposed to have a filter underneath, which is not gonna allow it, I mean, you don't want to be spraying this, that defeats the whole purpose of it.
Right.
But, I did look that the board has approved the pea gravel as, as a Blue Book compliant, which I brought the actual regulations, on 11 projects since January.
Right.
And they are similar to mine, I didn't say exactly, because everyone is unique by itself, but it is an approved use, if this would be that this was a brand-new lot and didn't have this before, and you wanted to limit that, that's different than, this has been this way for 31 years, and now it's.
Well, you're approving it, though, you are putting, at least you're getting some buffer where you had no buffer, so, you are getting a buffer, so, it is a good project, your change in the elevation, the grade's gonna be better, your lessening sheet runoff into the creek, I think at the end of the day, it's a good project and it is Blue Book compliant.
It is Blue Book compliant, but historically, we'd ask the homeowner, waterfront homeowner, if they would add some vegetation, it's an option that we asked them, it's not something that's mandatory in our regulations, if it was, you'd be having a different set of plans, but right now, looking at it as it, in this iteration, it complies to what we need, so, I'm okay with it.
Yeah. At this point, I'm good with it, you good with it?
Yeah.
Good, okay, so, good, we'll move it, you've done exactly what we've asked.
So, can I advance it?
I do, our engineer is on vacation.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, when you go to the regal meeting, then you vote on it?
We, it won't get there till when?
Next. We have to review the stamp plans on the next meeting, and then the following meeting would be approval.
It'll, so, the actual resolution will be passed probably December.
December 15.
15.
Yeah.
A month, 15th.
Right, so, right, but generally, it's a formality, we will, we will review the stamp plans, make sure they match the cover sheet, and then they'll be, the staff will put a resolution on it, we'll pass that resolution.
I have the hard copy, I don't know if you, you want just the regular copy of everything that I mailed, I emailed it to you.
You emailed it.
She said she brought the hard copy with her, if you wanted that.
If you want.
If you could hand that in now.
Okay.
But, we need the stamp plans for it, to finalize.
We need the stamp plans anyway, but the cover sheets.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I do have a walk-on for Shinnecock Shores too, right? Not you, no, I do, not you. Do you have anything else on today?
I don't, I don't.
She has nothing else on.
Thank you so much, I want to say thank you for all your service, you guys, it's been great over the years, and congratulations to you guys for.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Shinnecock Shores, we have a walk-on, right?
Up to you, I.
Yeah, no, we can walk it on, it's a, it's a homeowners association, they, basically, they've had permits for, for quite some time, right, you want to bring that, that one up?
What's the address, Scott?
That was just an extension, right? Renewal.
Well, because I think they went, did they go past the date?
Yeah, I don't think they passed the date.
Yeah, and then they, they submitted new paperwork, is that what it is?
How many renewals do we allow?
Four. Four, so, then you gotta do the paperwork over, so.
Well, how long is it past the date?
A month, it's a month, so then they.
They usually dig with a little bit of a.
Well, yeah, I believe they have, so, it's their maintenance dredge for their canals, so, we're not opposed to that, that's a big project for the Shinnecock Shores Association. Right, I, yeah, I have no issue with that.
Let, let Mr. Billy Mack.
Come up and speak to it, thank you.
You good? Morning, Billy. First Coastal.
You're just trying to jump the line.
Uh, that's my, my little trick. Uh, yeah, that, it's a renewal.
Well, we permitted in the past, it's a good project, it allows more water to circulate in and out of the canals and for safe navigation, so, it's a no.
Correct, it's a big problem for that association, so, we don't want to jam that up.
Get silted up constantly, so.
Constantly silted up, that area, same thing with where, you know, I live, next neighborhood over, same problem, constantly silted up, you gotta keep dredging over there or the road jams it up, so, we don't want to jam that up, they have enough, just trying to get the budgetarys squared away over there, so, I'm good with that.
When was the last time I was dredged, like 15 years ago?
No, sooner than that, yeah.
I remember doing that.
Thank you.
So, I'm good with that.
Yep.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
What else did I have walk on over here, Charlotte, was there anything else for me over here? That's it. Okay, so, let's go to trustee Warner. Thank you there, Mr. Billy Mack.
Max NY Management LLC, 322 East Montauk Highway, I don't see anybody here representing that application, we have been working on it with Mr. Wayne Bruin and company, but since he's not here to represent, I'd like to temporarily put it on hold. So, that we can have representation.
Is this the one where we had, like, confusion of the concrete bulkhead and whether that was gonna get undermined?
This is the septic, the new septic that they're gonna put on the, you know, seaward side of the house.
Oh, yeah.
We recommended metal sheathing and.
Yes, I did have a conversation with Mr. Bruin.
I did too.
And.
That's why I'm looking over here, yes, so.
And Wayne seemed receptive, but he had to speak to his client.
He had to go back to the engineer to see if the engineer was gonna be in line with what we're asking for, because he had engineered a cement copper dam that.
Right, and also, there was a question about just getting final board of health approval.
Yep.
And we did, we have seen a failure in a similar project where it did get undermined, so, it is, it is paramount that this has more sheathing than just concrete.
Yeah, it can only go so deep.
So, that's on hold.
No, when you do a steel, any bulkhead, if it's, if it's a five-foot above ground, it uses at least five or more, seven feet below ground, so, it won't get undermined.
That's standard procedure.
Considering what it's, what that concrete wall is gonna protect, we want as much depth as we can with the sheathing, so.
Right.
Protecting sewage from going in the bay.
At any rate, this application's on hold.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Then you got Alex I. Fauci, 2019 Irrevocable Trust, 61 Inlet Road, that's an consultant, which I see is represented. Terrific.
Joe's area, but I've been working on this before Joe was on the board, actually, I believe it's been about four years of back and forth with our board, met several times with the consultant, the client, to.
Can I give a little background on this, so?
Yeah, I met, the, the original application was for a dock that was situated in the middle of a property, the, after meeting with the consultant and my local knowledge of the water there, the dock would basically go to absolutely no water, and it would be, you know, kind of a useless dock, looking at the plan, the site plan and the ability for the dock to be moved closer to the neighbor's dock, which would also allow access to the channel, which is literally like within 100 feet of the dock, would be a functional dock, James did bring up the fact that it, there's a 100-foot pier line, and it does go 13 feet beyond the pier line that we have in this area, but I also expressed that we have approved dock similar to this in Sac Harbor Cove, where we use the vegetated shoreline to start measuring the 100 feet, which would allow the dock to go out a little bit further and acquire one and a half feet of water and steps and have, you know, the ability for kayaks and a small boat to be able to use the dock, it's also situated 15 feet off the extended property line, which is further than we normally would ask, but it's, you know, it's citing the dock, in this location, it's a smaller dock, less, less dock over the wetlands.
So, that's because of the depth, except for, as to the length of the end dock?
That, that and the vegetated shoreline is extensive vegetation along there, which citing it, this gives the, the property owner the ability to have one and a half feet of water and also have access to a closer channel.
Right.
Yeah, and so, and I want to thank Ed for his time, because we've been out here a couple of times with the property owner, trying to, trying to get this, this laid out right, and, and just sort of echoing what Ed just said, this, this structure, about 25 feet less of overall structural length than what was previously proposed, it traverses less high marsh, there's kind of a path that leads to a bit of a sandy area down there, so, you can kind of just walk down there and start at that spot, as opposed to extend, as opposed to extending the structure all the way through the thicker high marsh vegetation, there's a lot of really healthy, thick backwrist in that area, and so, this sort of avoids going through that area, it also extends a lesser distance out from the seaward edge of the intertidal marsh, and you can see in the plan that it kind of sits sort of in the shadow of a longer dock that's right next to it on the west, so, there's, with respect to the, the pier line, there's definitely no navigational issue, because this is a dock, it's basically a kayak dock that's sitting inside the shadow of a longer floating dock to the west, and also, as Ed mentioned, I think part of the prior concern was that it was a lot of structure leading to not a very viable end, whereas here, you get less structure leading to a viable end that matches your usual policy with the foot and a half of water at low tide for a kayak dock, and that's all based on updated hydrographic map that we had done by TSBE in Sac Harbor, that's the prior Mike Hemmer company, so.
And we have, we have egress stairs on this dock?
No, it's, it's, it's flat, you can actually walk.
Right over it, so, there's egress on the, on the.
Yep.
Is there a handrail?
Yep, it's gonna be open grate decking.
Treated, open grate decking, there's a set of access stairs in that sandy area on the landward end, and then the stairs down on the seaward side.
Are they fixed stairs or are they gonna, gonna remove stairs?
It's, it's just proposed to be just a set of fixed wooden stairs at the beginning and then the end, you know, again, it's, it's shallow water, so, that's just the way it's, it's designed at the moment, and we did, James, I think we did get you engineer stamp.
Yes, they are.
And stamp plans, so we have that as well.
And it looks like the only handrails are the stairs.
Yes, so, basically, this was similar to one we just had on Meadow Lane where we didn't propose handrails, but we just keep the pilings topped that the max allowed by the Blue Book, so, there is kind of a guide on either side without the visual impact of the, of the handrail.
Right, that's good.
It's minimal, so.
I'm good.
Can we advance it?
I would advance it.
That's good.
I would advance it.
Thank you.
That's all you have, right?
That's all I have.
All right.
Thanks again for your time, Ed, I appreciate it.
I do have one walk-on. It's for 6 TP Street, the old Jackson Marina or known as Shaglam, TKR Shores is representing this application, and she is here. Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, I requested an emergency replacement of approximately 198.
195 feet, yep.
195 feet, that's in really, really poor shape.
And this is surrounding the.
Yes.
Basically, the.
Travel lift area.
Travel lift area, whole lot of area, now, this is not, there's not gonna be anything done with the travel lift, correct?
No.
So, if we're gonna do that, we would need engineering on that, but this is just a bulk, this is just a bulkhead behind it.
Yeah, I advise them as such.
Okay.
Right, so, you don't want that undermining, because then it will turn into another problem, so, I would say let them, right, so, I would say let them.
Well, I mean, I've worked through this for 20 years, when, when Mr. Jackson owned it, and systematically, they've done piece by piece by piece of the bulkhead and marina, they've never done a lot, because I guess financially, it's not able to do it, so, this is another piece of the puzzle, so, that, that needs to be done, and, and for safety around it, I recommend it.
It's the same elevation?
Yep. It's in kind, in place.
I would say advance it.
I'm good with it, I mean, you guys want to see some pictures? Here's some pictures of the.
Little piece of woodwalk back there, they're not even.
Marinas have to be able to maintain their infrastructure.
They have to, it's dangerous right now.
They're, they're meeting all the Blue Book requirements of what it is that they're doing, and it's tough enough.
Yeah.
For them to survive in this economy, yeah, it is.
So, I recommend it, advance it then.
Advance, you have another one too? You have stamp plans?
Not at the moment.
You could get them, pending stamp plans, obviously. Advance it.
Advance it, pending stamp.
That's all, you'll provide them.
I will.
Now, you have another one?
Yeah. I do, this one is Reeves Bay. Yeah, Reeves Bay Marina.
Another Marina.
Yeah, another Marina.
And this is just a renewal, right?
It's a low sill.
No, this is a replacement of a low sill bulkhead, it's a.
What's the address again?
60 Bay Avenue.
I know they have cleaned that place up substantially, and they did a nice.
They did a really good job.
Yes.
Yeah, and this is the last piece that's not done.
The last piece, it's the low sills.
Right.
Right, so, we've done the low sill at Palm Quag Marina, I think it.
Yep.
Right, so, we've done a lot of these low sills, working with the marinas that are building, they're building wetlands at the same time they're making, keeping their, you know, their waterfront working.
Right.
And I know Suffolk County's had a big push on maintaining the working waterfront, right, and this is a.
Yeah.
Piece of it.
Not only that, it, it maintains a natural wetlands behind it, and it doesn't, over time, a.
It's starting to erode.
It'll just fall into the canal.
That's exactly what's happening.
Old CCA and old.
That's right.
Stuff that can come out, could put the new, you can get native vegetation in there, you can protect and keep the working waterfront going, at the same time, you're building wetlands, so, when you have those partnerships, it works well.
It has to stabilize the upland, basically in a nutshell.
Yeah, all those dock slips there, they gotta get, you know, protected from.
You have stamp plans for this one, you need them to.
I don't, I'm gonna send it to his engineer.
And the DEC height is established?
Um, it is, but I accounted for just a little bit of slight increase, because the bulkhead is all not level right now.
And you got them up to speed for what a low sill bulkhead is, because the last I heard, the DEC doesn't know what one is.
Yeah, I accounted for that.
I did approve one at 17 Allison, which I worked diligently getting through the DEC, and that's, that's the latest elevation in Shinnecock Bay, because I know this is Murch's Bay, so, two different bays, but that's the elevation that seems to work the best.
This one's Pecanic Bay.
Reeves Bay. Reeves Bay.
Right.
I, I would advance pending.
Stamp plans.
Your, your stamp plans, same, same as this standard.
Are you gonna need to do some sort of planting behind it, or are you just gonna kind of leave what's there?
We're trying to preserve the muscle beds that are behind it, honestly, so, no planting.
You have natives there, if you could just preserve the natives that are there, I think you're great.
Right, okay, good.
That's the whole key.
The wetlands in Reeves's Bay have, have flourished over the last 30 years, I mean, when I first started clamming over back in the 70s, there was virtually very little grasses around the fringe, over time, I know something has changed there, and the grasses have really, you know, taken over, and they've gotten much higher than, so, when you do get a northeaster or a hurricane or something like that, you have the natural protection of the wetlands, grasses for the whole perimeter of the bay.
Yes, it'll grow in there naturally, but if it keeps eroding, nothing's gonna grow out.
No.
I would advance pending stamp.
Okay, thank you.
You good with that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's common sense.
Okay, thank you.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, so, we going to?
Shipper Shore.
Shipper Shore LLC, 30 Waywood Road, and we have First Coastal, Mr. Billy Mack.
Buddy, Billy Mack, again, First Coastal, Shipper Shore Marina, this is a travel lift repair, that is in need of pretty quick repair before the spring season, so, thank you, Chip, for getting it to you guys soon.
Yeah, well, the working waterfront, you want to keep working.
Yeah.
Is this the actual steel runners, or the?
It's the, the substructure under the, steel's fine, it's.
No, no, I know, steel's fine, but I, so, the substructure under it?
Yeah, the pilings.
And they've been engineered?
Uh, yes, right now, they've got, they're gonna replace what they have with stronger ones.
Yeah.
Uh, and we have an engineer that's reviewing this.
Right, so, you're gonna need those stamped engineer plans as part of the permitting process, right?
Absolutely. I mean. That, yeah, what we proposed is exactly what's there, but a little beefier, based on our conversations with the engineers, he's, he's prepared to stamp this.
So, advance it.
So, you're gonna give us the amount of weight that can be used on this? Yeah, because I, I, I worked on a couple bridges and a couple, and a few of these, you know, plans, and the engineer should give us the amount that.
Corrected.
Yeah, I know that it would be based on the travel lift.
Capacity.
There now.
Right, travel lift capacity should be on there, it'll, all part of the process of getting those engineered plans stamped by him with those approvals, that it's gonna be able to handle that capacity.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a standard, is that.
Just to be clear, it's for the bulkhead and the floating docks reconstruction as well?
Yeah, there's also a section of existing dock that needs to be rebuilt, no change in the existing footprint, and the bulkhead as well.
Same height.
The, is attached to the travel lift, the critical part to us right now is the travel lift.
What's the bulkhead material?
Right now, I think it's, geez, I think it's creosote, so, we're gonna be.
So, you're getting that out?
Placing it with.
Shore guard?
With shore guard, yeah, topical hardwood framing.
So, you got another good project?
Yeah.
You're getting the creosote out, you're getting.
Getting the creosote out.
There's a lot of that going on.
Yeah.
It's all failing now, and.
Right.
You're going.
Made a good run now, I mean, creosote's been around since, what, the 40s?
I remember Snapperford, I've been getting that stuff all over myself.
Eight years.
I remember that smell on a hot summer day.
It's gonna last a hell of a lot longer than the tropical hardwood is.
Right, you know all about that.
Sure do.
Know all about that.
Yeah. The Palm Quag Bridge is built in 1935 with creosote pilings, and it's still standing.
Yeah.
Right, just had to protect it from the marine boers, they were amazed at the, the shape that the bulk of those pilings were actually in, right, and, and while the life that's underneath that thing is just phenomenal, right?
Oh, yeah, totally.
People come from all over the country to dive there.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, so, is this one good, you guys good, I'm, I'm good with it, you need the stamped engineer plans?
Yep.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Then you've got a 65 Cliff, wow.
65 Cliff, we're back on that, and I, I believe, Chip, that we brought that into compliance with the.
The letter of authorization.
From the DEC compliance. From the DEC, uh, compliance.
And we, we know that there's a possibility that that's not enough square footage to satisfy the, the letter of completion from the DEC, correct?
We do, but we're gonna do the best we can.
Okay, so I believe, considering that this has no bearing on the current permit that's applied, the, from a Gina for the trustees, and this is outside the bounds of that permit, that, that we could advance it. It's fifty, on the, on the plan is now fifty cubic yards, correct?
Correct, which is consistent with...
We don't need, we don't need anything stamped, because this is not structural, so let's go with it.
Advance.
Thank you.
That's all you have?
I do have...
You have one more, I'm just, Chip, I don't know if you have any walk-ons.
I didn't know. Yeah.
I got one more, which, oh, I believe...
Yes, dude, you have twenty, Shrublin Road.
Twenty Antonio?
Yes.
Twenty-one Shrubland.
So this is actually very similar to the dock application you guys looked at. This is, um, Shrublin Road, we're looking to get a, um, essentially a small boat kayak type dock access into, um, Cold Spring Pond. The depth at the end is about a foot and a half, and we're looking to go along the existed, existing, uh, four-foot-wide path that was approved by the Conservation Department. So we're fourteen feet away from the property line, as opposed to ten, so it is Blue Book compliant.
And what is the depth there?
Uh, we're ending at around one-point-seven feet.
Just stairs, right?
And there's no...
Could you give me the G I N, please?
Is it no railing? No rail, no railing, railing's just on the stairs. Well, actually, we didn't, we're not even showing railings on the stairs, 'cause the tide is gonna immerse them halfway.
Big stairs, or you're gonna do removable stairs?
Uh, they are removable. Open grate decking, tropical hardwood piles, and framing.
Especially that project. No handrail, so it's all low-key.
Yeah, and again, the existing footpath is consistent with the location.
And the pier line, I think pier line was a hundred feet over there, you were saying before, yeah.
We'll write it more.
Maximum a hundred feet, if, if you guys deem it appreciable water depth.